I'd like to call the regular meetings of the City Council of the City of Victorville, City Council of City and the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency and the Victorville Water District. And I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
May I, Cabralis? If I might, we do have one very short item to add to the agenda for the City or for the Redevelopment Agency. And it's to consider real estate negotiations. This item arose after the posting of the agenda, and there's an immediate need to respond. It's an offer on property that is currently, I believe, in escrow with the agency at 15 430 Calibra in Victorville. The negotiating parties would be the Redevelopment Agency and Golden State Arrio Properties, Inc. We received an offer on certain properties late, I believe, Thursday after the posting of the agenda, and we'd like to get a response to these parties. So upon a motion pursuant to government code 54954.2B2, you could add this item, and it would be real estate negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So turn to a closed session. I will now reconvene the meeting, the regular meetings of the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District and City Council of the City of Victorville, when yet have a closed session.
Mr. Mayor, Cabralis, there was no reportable action as a result of the five o'clock closed session items.
Thank you. As is customary, we will have our invocation, and it will be by Gary Domney from the Salvation Army Church in Victorville. That'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance by our own Captain Reynolds, our Chief of Police.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we ask your presence and your blessing on this meeting tonight. You're an awesome God. You are a God of wisdom. Lord, we ask for a portion of that wisdom this evening. May those here assembled be guided by what is right and not by political agendas. May the debate and any disagreements be covered by patience and goodwill. May we remember that we are not Democrats, Republicans, or any other party, but we are Americans. May you bless this council meeting, and God bless the Salvation Army, and may God bless the United States of America. Amen.
Before we start the regular meetings, we do have a special presentation by Sean McLennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to give a little presentation on the industrial wastewater treatment plant that we have under construction at SCLA. The project started around June, and let me see if I can get this correct. The first thing that we were out there doing was digging some holes. As you can see...
That's a good start.
As you can see, these were considerable holes. The one you're looking at, we'll get another shot on it. You can see how deep that gets. That's 40 feet deep. The purpose of that is to collect sewage from the city, SCLA, and in addition, there is a third pipe that will be dedicated to industrial waste, and the first customer there would be Dr. Pepper. And those pipes bring the wastewater into a lift station, and that's what this hole is for. In addition to that, another hole, that doesn't look like a hole as much, but it's actually six feet deep and just very large in area, and that's where the tanks are located. The construction then moves forward with the placement of a lot of steel and concrete, forming of the slabs for the bottom of those tanks. The tanks are going to be, the largest one is 800,000 gallons, but in total, the collection of all of the tanks will be able to process two and a half million gallons of wastewater, both the industrial and the municipal wastewater combined, every single day. As you can see, the steel associated with the construction of the tanks is very large, so they actually have to use cranes to manhandle reinforcing bars into place. The next stage would be to pour the concrete slabs and then start going vertical with the steel. This will be forming the walls, the external and internal walls of the tanks. And this slide depicts the status of the project in July. And then we move on to the next stage, which is actually forming the walls of the tanks and pouring concrete into them. To give you an idea of the size, that wall is about 20 feet high. Six feet of it would be into the ground with 14 feet above. And so to give an order of magnitude of the scale, you can see those men standing on the top of the wall, and the piece of equipment there is a concrete pump. We keep moving forward with pouring lots of concrete and erecting a lot of steel, and we end up with a collection of tanks that will be the processing part of the wastewater treatment plant. So on this slide, you can see that there's a wall that has been completed and stripped, and other walls that are still under construction in the background there. Again, you can see the concrete pump. This slide is just a few days old, so you can see now the tanks are completed. This was taken from one of the high lifts that they use out there to get a better perspective. So on the left, you can see the tanks, external to the tanks, then you can see the commencement of the erection of the structural steel that will support the pipework and the electrical. Beneath that, there will be pumps and filters and all sorts of fancy pieces of equipment. On the right, that is the deep hole that we saw earlier. That's the lift station, so all of the sewage will enter at that point. So you can see that the wells that the flow collects in, they're well under construction also. And it's amazing what they can do with computers nowadays. That would be a 3D representation of the same tank assembly that you could see constructed in the previous slide. This would be a site plan of the whole layout, so right in the middle is that same tank collection that you saw on the slides. Up in the top to the left, that is the lift station, that's the 40-feet-deep hole. To the top on the right, that would be the location of the sludge dewatering facility. South of the tanks, towards the bottom, there's going to be the operations building. Construction has not started on that part yet, and adjacent to that is going to be where the generators are going to be located. And south of that again is a, it's an outline resembling the tanks in the center of the site plan, and the idea would be that the two and a half million gallon initial capacity could be doubled to five million gallons simply by doing a duplication of the construction of the tanks, but the operations building and the lift station would serve the future expansion. So there's cost savings to be realized there at the point in time when we need to expand. This, I don't know if you've noticed, but this is the 1 million gallon reclaimed water elevated storage tank. The tank has not been completed yet, but this is the column that the tank would sit on. So all of the reclaimed water that is produced from the wastewater treatment plant would be stored in this elevated tank, and this is adjacent to the West Winds Golf Course in close proximity to the pond, which also is used to store reclaimed water for irrigation purposes at SCLA. This is the amount of contract awarded to date, almost $25 million associated with the wastewater treatment plant. The breakdown is there. We probably have about another $5 million worth of contracts associated with, just with the wastewater treatment plant itself. We're still looking at a target date of completion of around February, March of 2010, and this seems to dovetail into Dr. Pepper's planned start of operation. On the sludge handling, we have three options. First option is the preferred. The sludge handling agreement that we're working with, VVWR, is certainly the preferred one simply because we have cheaper means of dealing with the sludge. We would just connect to VVWR with a pipe and pump the thickened sludge down to their facility. The other alternative is to install, as we saw on the site plan, a dewatering facility to dry the sludge into a cake, and then it is hauled off by a licensed contractor who will be able to dispose of it appropriately. I think the licensing is an important aspect. We obviously wouldn't deal with an unlicensed contractor for that purpose. We also have looked into the costs associated with handling. We'll show that in the next slide. The other is just to haul the sludge off, again, by a licensed contractor without dewatering, but obviously that has its expenses. Although no capital upfront, it's a much more expensive option, as we'll see in a minute. It's important to note that when we embarked on the wastewater treatment plant, the option depicted as number two is the option that we did the financial modeling. And so option number one came up later. So option number two included the construction of the dewatering, sludge dewatering facility, and it has a price tag of $1,150,000. That's a capital cost, and approximately nine cents per gallon to deal with that sludge. Our consultants suggested that we think of contacting VVWR and working out an agreement with them. They perceived a less expensive way of handling the sludge, and we've been pursuing that now for about a year. Associated with that option, there is an $850,000 capital cost. $550,000 of that is a connection fee with VVWR, and $300,000 for the pipe and the pumps to deliver the sludge. The treatment cost, that's something that's been negotiated with VVWR, is at just under three cents per gallon. So if we were able to go with that option from the original modeling, we'd be saving about $450,000 a year. Obviously, there's the modeled option, we've talked about that, and then the other option that is available is not to build a sludge dewatering facility, but simply to contract to haul that sludge offsite. There's no initial capital cost associated with that, but that's running at about 12 cents a gallon. And we did a comparison just between the option two and the option three, so you can see the kind of yellow-colored line starts off with the initial capital cost, but it very quickly, after about four and a half years, it starts to become the cheaper option. And so if we fail to reach agreement with VVWR on the number-one option, our recommendation is that we go with option number two. That concludes the presentation. Be glad to answer any questions.
What, does the job creation estimate continue to be approximately 400?
My understanding is between Dr. Pepper and Plastapack. I think it's a later phase of the Plastapack operation. It's over 400, yes.
What is the completion time estimated?
The, we intend to be ready to accept the first flows. It's probably going to be very early March of 2010. And when I say that, there will be flows that would be discharged from the Dr. Pepper as they go through testing, but it's not water that really has to be treated. But full treatment operations are slated for early March 2010.
I would like to make a request. Apparently, there's been some misinformation, at least with the, some of the members of the VVWR regarding this project. Would you be able to make this presentation to the board?
I'd be glad to, Mr. Mayor.
And I guess there's some questions about the permits, whether we have all the permits in place.
I do have one question. I was doing a little research in that when we were bumping into the issues of what we do with this sludge, and there's a couple of engineering journals that I picked up off the Internet that indicated that even though there's a toxicity to this sludge, that there are some actual, some applications out there depending on what kind of industrial construction's going on, and they weren't alluding to the highway system either. So maybe we'll need to look into seeing, maybe we can get value back for that sludge and find like a recycled item. It may wind up being a revenue source for us.
The sludge primarily that we're talking about is the aerobic sludge, which comes from the municipal wage, waste. The anaerobic sludge, which comes from the Dr. Pepper industrial waste, does have value, and in fact, there's a potential revenue source for a user to come and collect it and pay us for that. That's being looked into as we speak.
Any comments?
No, I don't have any comments. I think that council is aware. The sludge agreement was submitted by our engineer, Sean McGlade, to VVWR back in...
November last year.
November of last year, which started the process of negotiating for the sludge agreement. Somewhere along the line, someone decided that there had to be some major rewrites of the JPA, the Joint Powers Authority. And that's probably is a lot of truth because the JPA is in its original form. I think it was written in '75 or '76, has two amendments, a slight modification amendment in 1998, and another one in 2003, I believe, or '04. And so it looked like an opportunity to rewrite some of the issues, some of the conditions of that. However, I don't know exactly what happened, but the game of negotiation began, or somebody referred to it as a chess game. And a couple of months ago, it became very apparent that we were not going to get a sludge agreement until the JPA was rewritten. And I had said, not saying anything that I haven't said before, that there appeared to be an issue that was, that was being held back because every time we would meet, there would be a new issue we weren't gaining. And finally, the issue that surfaced was, the majority of membership wanted to change a three-quarter vote from unanimous to three-quarter. What that meant was that three of the four member entities could vote on a bond issue. And there's pros and cons of unanimous vote versus majority. A unanimous vote means that any one of the four entities that's a member of the JPA has a veto. That can be good and bad. Also, the three-quarter vote can be good or bad. And what concerned, what concerned the staff, and we did talk with some of the council members, Mayor Cabralis being the spokesman for the, for the JPA. Not that it would have occurred, not that it was likely to occur, but there was the possibility that if you changed the JPA to a three-quarter vote, three of the four members could sell. I guess the original proposal was 220 million in bonds, and therefore, you could end debt Victorville for a substantial portion since we have 70% of the flow. Therefore, we pay 70% of the cost of the treatment. Therefore, we would pay 70% of the cost of the debt without ever having a vote or even council voting against it. And yet, the citizens would be indebted. We didn't feel that that was in the best interest of the city, and therefore, the final determination was to submit that to the city council. The council said no to the majority, and so it'll be only indebtedness with a unanimous vote of all the member entities. We have another, I guess a new item now about the buy-ins or something, but we have decided that we are proceeding with our option two. We cannot take the chance of not being ready for a Dr. Pepper. We cannot take the chance of not being able to handle the flow. We cannot take the chance of them being, open the door and hiring 200 people and not being able to open the door. So we are proceeding, and on that basis, since we're handling our own sludge, if we get a sludge agreement, that's a positive, it's good, but if we don't, we are proceeding without it. And as I have indicated, if the major reason was to modify the JPA agreement for the sludge, and we don't need the sludge agreement, there may not be any reason to modify the JPA. We're not sure why all this happened, but we're proceeding, we're on schedule, we're going to meet our deadlines. And if we get a sludge agreement, good, but if we don't, we will proceed with option two. Cox, you probably have a better handle on the memory than I do, but it seems to me when this got started, there was mandates from the state that Apple Valley and Espera would begin to sewer their communities in a responsible way, and about the only thing they've really done responsibly is put in a major trunk line, as I understand it, and nothing else. A lot of septic tanks are added out there and everything else that have actually taken away from the regional plant. And since we're a 70% player, it seems to me that the only, going with their other option, the 30% could tell the 70% what to do at any given moment in time, and that would be to their advantage, but they have failed in their own way. If everybody was evenly proportioned in this thing, like they should have been at the time, the county exception because of where they are, but the other three communities, then they might, there might be an argument for that, but I don't think there's any argument for suggesting that we give up our right to veto anything that's, has to do with this sewer plant because the other two, no fault of these councils, present councils, but past councils failed in their mission, and I think LaHotten would agree to that. There is a, there's a long history, which takes too long to cover the reasons, but for those who will recall, there was an open sewage lagoon was the first sewers for the city. The city of Victorville, even at that time, had major sewers in the city. After, there was a cease and desist in order to build the regional plant. The JPA was formed originally with the Mojave Water Agency, and at the time, a bond issue was voted on, we received 87.5% grants, 12.5% of local money, tax money. And there was a schedule that was adopted by the Water Board because there was a belief that septic tanks could actually reach the water supply, and there was a possibility at least... And there was a possibility, at least in their mind, that if the septic tanks continue, that the water supply that's in the ground could be degraded. And there was, uh, there was a mandate that we began connecting, um, sewers and, and building sewer, community sewer lines to connect. Uh, Victorville embarked on, for those who remember, assessment districts and assessed large areas of the city to connect the, the, connect the sewer system to the main regional plant. Um, all of Green Tree East, for example, was an area that was in septic tanks and was converted to sewers, uh, with the city participating in the cost and all use of the property owners being assessed. Uh, all of Victor Village initially was on septic tanks. All of Liberty Village was on septic tanks. And all of those, the city of Victorville established assessment districts, and the property owners have paid, along with the city, to ensure that we protect the groundwater and we put the flow, uh, at the regional plant. I, I don't want to speak about Hesperia, Apple Valley, but I think because of the larger lots or the failure to the individuals to agree to, to have, uh, these assessment districts, um, the rate of connection didn't go as expected. Um, and so that's why today, we, even though there's been growth in all the new growth and the subdivision are connected to the septic tanks, uh, you have all of Apple Valley and Orgradi, Apple, uh, Spring Valley Lake and Hesperia and Victorville. And I, I don't know the exact figure, but I think of the flow, six, sixty-eight percent comes from Victorville. And so we have, uh, met the mandate that the, the state Water Board originally put out. We've met the mandates and the goals that LaHotten had put out, and we've met the goals that the city council has established, and we will continue, uh, continue to do so. We hope that, uh, the, the improvements are made to the plant, even though there's been some rumors that, um, Victorville wouldn't vote to expand the plant. Uh, I don't know. I, I don't know how those rumors get started. We've gone back and checked the record, and since the JPA was formed, we cannot find, and if it exists, we haven't been able to find it, where Victorville has ever withheld its vote or voted no on expansion of the plant, or to raise money, or to borrow funds, or to sell bonds in order to make every, uh, to meet every obligation that's been placed upon the plant, including new standards of discharge and including the expansion. So I'm not sure how these things get started, but, uh, uh, I think Victorville, two weeks ago, or two weeks ago, again, in passing a resolution, affirmed that when it comes time to expand the plant, to assure that, that a sewer treatment plan is available to the county areas, Hesperia, Apple Valley, and Victorville, that Victorville made a commitment that it would vote to meet its obligation. And, uh, that's why we're very comfortable in this. We have done everything that we should do, uh, politically, professionally, and otherwise, and, uh, going, and we're moving forward now. So I think our, our need to negotiate in regard to anything is over. It's a plus if we get it. If not, we will proceed as scheduled.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. We'll now proceed to the, uh, public, uh, comment, and this, um, public comment section will take into consideration not only the city of Victorville council, but also the other agencies that we represent. And we're limited to three minutes. I have three cards, and the first card is El Cotillo.
Yeah, I came here for one reason, because I read in the paper, and I heard from a lot of people that Mike Rothschild here got pretty nasty with Ryan McCrechan for voting for the seven dollars that you were crying about that would bankrupt the city when you and Mr. Caldwell and your other buddy that Ryan McCrechan beat out already bankrupted the city, and you worried about seven dollars that he voted for the people and you all four voted against the people? You ought to be ashamed of yourself. You're nobody. And the next election, he'll still be sitting up there. You'll be gone. You should have more manners. Just because he's new here doesn't mean you should treat him like a piece of garbage. You should apologize to him. He's got more intelligence than you ever have, in my opinion. And I don't have anything personal against Mr. Caldwell or anybody, but I don't like you. I've had dealings with you before, and I know the kind of person you are, and you could care less about the city of Victorville, about the people in the city of Victorville, okay? You should learn from him how to take your business. He's a businessman. You were a school teacher, and the kids didn't even like you anyway.
Next is Charles.
I hope that tall tank is earthquake proof.
Next is Charles Colerini.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Uh, I just have, on a lighter note, uh, I'd like to stress how the code enforcement is handling situations in the city. Uh, I've been a property owner in Victorville since, uh, nineteen sixty-nine, and we've been living here since nineteen sixty-four. And, uh, in the area of Fairway Mobile Estates, it's, uh, basically the, the second only area where you could have a mobile home and own your own property. There's some, uh, blight in the area that continues to grow like a bad fungus. It's worse than the swine flu. And, uh, basically, uh, we've had, uh, notations on the computers, code enforcement, for at least eight to ten years. People remove their interior walls on their mobile homes. They start pulling the siding off mobile homes. They put trash out in the street. They block the city streets. They block the sidewalks. And it seems like it's very hard to get a code enforcement officer down there to issue citations because of their, uh, unlicensed vehicles, five unlicensed vehicles on one property, uh, room additions within ten feet of the next residence, uh, possibly within five feet. I think they, they did a variance on that because the mobile home lots weren't large enough. Uh, tree branches, they cut trees down, they leave them in the street. There's so much vagrancy and trash, and the streets that I'm basically concerned with is Calico Drive, Elcona, and Nassau, which is off Yates Road. And, uh, basically, we have owned the property there. We have rentals there. We try to keep our rentals up, but when you have blight living across the street or existing across the street, it's kind of hard. And, uh, basically, we bought the property when the streets were dirt. We've come a long way, and we try to, mostly senior citizens in the area, they can't make it to the council meetings. So, uh, basically, I'm speeding, speaking for the whole neighborhood, and I would appreciate if code enforcement would, uh, would do a little citation writing in the area, and some of the, a couple of the mobile homes actually need to be condemned if, uh, building and safety would go inside.
We have fifteen seconds left, please.
I appreciate the, uh, opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Amala Fortun.
Well, that's twice it's LaFortune. Uh, it came out in the paper here, it's, it's, you guys had a revised audit, four hundred and eighty million dollars in debt? That's an awful lot of, do you know that that is bigger than the city of Los Angeles, And you people sit up there, and whose brilliant brainchild was it to start buying houses, refurbishing them in a downturn market? That is really rocket science at its best. You know, what you should do if you want to try and help a city, file bankruptcy, and you all quit. Not you. You should be president. Thank you.
Now, sir, sir, Mr., would you, wait a minute. I, I can't let you walk away like that. And, uh, with your comment, I, I'm not going to debate with you, but I want to, I want to, if you're willing to listen to me for a minute, I'd like to explain something to you. Uh, you talk about, are you going to listen to me or are you going to argue with me? Because I, I'm, I'd like to say something, and I don't want to, what your comments, and I'm sure your feelings were, were legitimate and correct, but I, you really need to understand a little bit about how municipal government works, and I'm going to make it real simple and short. We have one of the largest redevelopment agencies in the state of California. Redevelopment agency means that you take assets that grow on property and you endet those into the future. Uh, we can go twenty, thirty years into the future. That's how we get infrastructure down for a Dr. Pepper plan, who's creating jobs and other things. So as we go in debt, that debt is legitimate debt that is all amortized against property, a value that's coming back to the city over a period of time. We know exactly how much is in and how much is going out. So all of the indebtedness, there are various categories. I have an issue with one of those numbers, but with, we expect, expect with one of them, uh, most of the, the numbers in there are perfectly legitimate. Any city would have a varying amount, but they would all have different amounts of indebtedness. And it's because they go back into their, uh, their revenue stream and they build those, that infrastructure upfront. That's what this city is about and everybody else. Maybe the article didn't explain it that well, but there's nothing wrong with the indebtedness of this city. We have big numbers because we have big, much bigger projects than most of the cities in the state of California, with the exception of the large ones like San Francisco and , and, uh, Los Angeles and a number of, a couple dozen others. The fact is that that half a billion is very reasonable for the amount of projects that we have in the revenue stream that will pay that back. If we did none of that, what we would simply be, would be, all due respect to Barstow, another stop on the desert out there on the way to Las Vegas on a freeway there. But that indebtedness is creating jobs, it's creating value, and it has a revenue stream that will come back and pay back every bit of that over a period of time. It's all calculated. And when we make a decision to go in debt, we know exactly how much revenue is coming back in to pay for it. So I know that, that article was just kind of generalizing, and it's hard to get a handle on that, but there's nothing wrong with any of those numbers in there. There's a couple of numbers that, uh, different people might have made different decisions, but the big numbers, the big, if you will, the half a billion, as you were, all of that is, uh, perfectly acceptable indebtedness to the redevelopment agency that we manage out here at the airport. And that's my story. I mean, there's a lot more detail that explains what I'm saying, but, uh, there's nothing wrong with that being. I know you sit there and say, gee, that's wrong. Well, if we never went in debt and all that mu, that increment, that tax increment that we have created out there would go to the state of California. That's where the money goes if we don't take it, and we do with it. I'd rather have five people sitting up here, whether it's this five or five other people, making those decisions, how that indebtedness and that money is going to be spent on the infrastructure than I would for Sacramento or the County Board of Supervisors. So, in all due respects, sir, uh, those numbers aren't wrong at all, and there's nothing, and I'm, and I'll debate anybody, anytime, in any campaign that I'm in for running for reelection, as to what we did with the money, the jobs that we're creating with it, and how it's getting paid back. And if we didn't do those things, who else would have benefited? Sacramento.
Well, you know, when you stop and look at it, you should, uh,
This is not a debate.
It's okay.
You said you, you had your three minutes.
You respond to me, I'll respond to him.
He had, no, he had his. It's not a debate, sir. Please take your seat.
No.
Take your seat, please.
No. I'll leave.
Okay.
See ya.
We'll now go into the library board of trustees' agenda. We have, uh, no revisions and a consent calendar. Move for approval.
Second.
Next, we have the, uh, logistics, uh, rail authority and also the airport authority, and Chairman Caldwell will share those.
Mayor Cabralis, there are no items for the rail authority. There are no add-ons. As to the airport authority, the only item is written communications, items three and four, which deal with the approval of the lease to renew with the United States Army National Training Center and to approve a sublease agreement with CAL FIRE for the lease of space at SCLA to support aerial firefighting operations. A motion to approve items three and four would be in order.
Come on, move.
Second.
That concludes the business for, uh, the airport authority.
Next, we have the redevelopment agency. We have no revisions, and we have the consent calendar, item three.
Approval.
Caldwell.
Thinking of it.
Uh, written communications, it's item number three. It's a request to approve, uh, water treatment services, uh, for the first quarter of fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand ten.
Approval.
Item number four, it's a request to approve the purchase, purchase of a mesh networking system, uh, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Counsel member Almond, may I get a vote from you? Thank you.
Next is the city council agenda. Do we have any revisions?
There is just one revision, Mayor Cabralis. Uh, on public hearing, item number three, there is one additional, um, objection that's been received. It's on the dais.
Item number three is a public hearing. Call to hear arguments for or against the introduction of ordinance number twenty-two fifty-two and the adoption of resolution number zero-nine, zero-nine-four regarding general plan amendment and zone change PLN-oh-nine-zero-zero-zero-four-one. I will now call, open up the public hearing on item number three. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three, please come to the podium. Anyone wishes to speak for or against item number three. Hearing none, I will close item number three. And, uh, I would, um, request a motion to, uh, read, uh, the title for ordinance number twenty-two fifty-two.
There is a resolution that accompanies this item also, Mayor Cabralis. It's item A, resolution oh-nine-oh-nine-four.
Oh, B, A, and B.
Move, uh, adoption of resolution zero-nine-dash-zero-nine-four and introduction of ordinance number twenty-two fifty-two.
Okay, and now I'll read the title of ordinance twenty-two fifty-two. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville approving zone change PLN-oh-nine-zero-zero-zero-four-one to allow for various citywide zone changes, city of Victorville.
Next, we have our consent calendar, item number four.
Approval.
Item Number Five is an additional $1,551,410 appropriation that's been funded by the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, and requested that approval be granted to comparatively bid the present list of roads.
Bill moved.
Number Six is a request to approve the Bear Valley Road, Fish Hatchery Road Traffic Single Program Supplement Agreement. Authorize the mayor to execute said agreement and adopt Resolutions Number 09096. Number Seven, request to award a construction contract to International Line Builders in the amount of $555,515.58.
Move for approval.
Councilmember McEckern, could I get a vote from you? Thank you.
Number Eight is a request to approve a change order in the amount of $23,602.41. Motion to approve.
For approval.
Number Nine, request to authorize the city manager to sign an incremental natural gas facilities agreement in the amount of $700,407. Item Number Ten is a request to approve a change order estimated at $220,000 for Cooley Construction. Item Number Eleven is the report from City Council members, and I'll turn to Mr. Caldwell.
I have none.
Okay, what I am going to do here is I've looked at the Daily Press, I think most of you've seen this one here about the pricing documents. Now, let me say something here about this story, about how some of our local construction people are having problems meeting the commitments from the state. Democrats and Republicans are both environmentalists. They obviously go after the environment in different ways. The state is very heavy-handed. I've sat on the air quality board for fifteen years. The rules that are in place right here should not be in place. They're onerous, they're unconsciously dishonest about everything because they don't have science or engineering to back them up. What happens is they say, let's improve the air to a certain level, and we'll let it meet it at a certain standard. There's no science involved in that. That's just what they do. AB 32 is that way. Here we go. Here's one of the prices we're paying under AB 32 for the air quality issues down there. The state air quality board says that this company here, and many others like it, are going to be paying extra $20,000 into their equipment to meet air quality standards that are hypothetical at best. California doesn't need to save the planet. In fact, the planet doesn't need to save the planet. The environmental movement that started this whole thing started fifteen years ago by saying the planet was getting too cold, and then they said, whoops, wait a minute, better not do that. The planet's too, is getting climate warm now because they want to get rid of CO2. So you can manage CO2. You can't do anything about the cold, but you can do something about the heat, because obviously CO2 is going into the air. That must be doing it. Well, guess what? In this newspaper here, not only is this article explaining to you the problems that every small business in this state is meeting, but then on the editorial page here, the same newspaper, same date, by the way, that was yesterday, Tuesday, no, it's today, the editorial page, it's right here, the planet's been moving, I mean, cooling for the last eleven years. So guess what the environmental movement calls it now? Climate change. They still are going through all of these onerous rules with small businesses, big business, and everybody else. This is fixable. This is bogus stuff, but this state is self-inflicting its wounds. And the only way that we're going to get a handle on this type of stuff and stop doing ourselves damage, and here, Cooley and some of these other companies would be the first to tell you their problems at the base root there, those equipments, is to talk to your legislators and tell them, you're not, you're living a dream out here. You don't have any science, engineering, or anything, just a feel-good attitude to go out there and control something. Just like Congress wants to control the health issue, here are the environmental movement. Once we control the environmental movement, we control everything anyway. Because how do I control your health? I just take care of your air quality, right? How do I take care of your air quality? I make all these companies have ridiculous standards. I sat on this air quality board here for fifteen years. I know the technical details involved in all this, and I know the politics that gets it started, and how it's almost impossible to get back, pull back from it. You know why it's possible to pull back? Because we don't have any accountability in the legislature over those issues. Those people are there for a few years and gone, and before you even know it, you can't hold them accountable for it. These articles, and there was, by the way, there was one other article here. I don't want to put a part of, too much of a part of a spin to it, but there's an article in here about the Republican Party refusing to sit down with Nancy Pelosi's, or, excuse me, not Nancy, Barbara Boxer's Environmental Committee now, because there's no science around it. Sit down and talk about some of those engineering facts and scientific facts, and everybody can sit around the table and make some good environmental law. And obviously, you need to clean up the air. There isn't any doubt about that. It's good for Los Angeles, good for the whole planet, but the way that they're going about it now is killing us. It's hard. The Victor Valley is a successful spot in this state in spite of the state, not because of the state. We do all the things that we can up here within the law, but all the states we can to make it work and try to prevent them from leaving town. But we've lost a couple of factories in the past, and we don't want to lose anymore. And that's why we're working so hard at SCLA out there with the things that we do, the investments we do, the indebtedness that I had mentioned to the gentleman that walked out of here. But all of those things, to meet those kind of standards, has cost a lot of money to keep those companies and jobs in this area, but we're doing it. But today's newspaper, the Daily Press, three different stories, all of which interconnected, the editorial page, the front page, and the article on the Republicans in Congress having a problem with Senator Boxer's committee, that she had the cap and trade type of thing that I'm sure they're going to be pushing through, that will cost you a good $3,000 to $4,000 a year per household in this state. And we don't have to do that. We shouldn't be doing it. It's not justified. And certainly, if it were justified, why should the state of California be the only one sitting out there trying to save the planet when the rest of this country, including our own, doesn't buy into that same standard? They have the most onerous standards in the whole state of Calif, in the whole country in California. I would suggest it only in New Jersey and maybe Maryland might be, all due respect to the folks from those states, might be the only ones that might be a little bit more dysfunctional than California. But I was born in this state, and I've seen it morph into something that I would have never believed thirty years ago, but here we are today. But these articles here speak for themselves.